It is Tuesday, 2 August, 2016, at 7:00 PM. I'd like to call the regular Board of Trustees meeting to order. And in lieu of invocation tonight, I would like everyone with the... The board has been declared on the police and law enforcement in our country right now. I would like to have a moment of silence to remember the fallen officers. And unfortunately, it's getting to the point where there's too many to mention. We so appreciate the work that they do, but I would like to have a moment of silence so that we can remember the fallen and their families and hope everyone will pray for them, that this madness finally stops. Thank you, everyone, for joining me in that. Melissa, roll call, please.
Trustee Head.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
O'Brien, Burgland.
Here.
Pike.
Here.
President Wecken.
Here.
Trustee Zeiss.
Here.
Mzappa.
Here.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, review and approved minutes from the regular board meeting of 5 July 2016 and a special board meeting of 11 July 2016.
I'll move, Stan.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Is there any amendments or corrections to the minutes of either meeting? Thank you, Melissa, for doing a good job. All in favor, say goodbye saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is comments from the floor. This is an opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, opportunities, either on or not on the agenda. And I believe Shannon is here to make such comments. So I'd like to go up, introduce yourself, put yourself on camera.
Well, first of all, I want to be respectful of the meeting and those people who probably have very important business to cover this evening. My name is Shannon Zimmerman, and I wanted to take just a quick moment tonight to introduce myself. I am running to replace or to succeed Dean Knudsen. And there was a primary election on August 9th that I would encourage and remind everybody, please make sure you get out and vote. It's important. Very briefly, I have lived in River Falls for the last 20 years. My wife and I started a business 19 years ago there, our first business, and it's grown and been very successful. Gotten to meet a ton of great people who live in Hudson, North Hudson, Robertson, River Falls, who now work for us. And probably like some of you, I got a little tired of being a spectator and watching some of the activities that go on in Madison. And I thought, well, I'm going to put my money where my mouth is, I guess, and I'm going to go fight for us there. And so, given the opportunity, I'll do just that. More information can be found on my website, shannonzimmerman.com, my Facebook page. Otherwise, no matter what you do, get informed and just get out and vote on August 9th.
Are you on the ballot for the night?
I am.
I'm looking at it right here, and I don't see your name on there.
I am on the ballot. Yes, sir.
30th Assembly District.
30th Assembly, yep.
Republican.
I know there's already been absentee voting and early voting has already occurred or is occurring right now as well, which is a reminder, you can early vote now that is open.
You got a 2016 ballot, then?
Okay, good. Thank God. All right. Now you can vote for me. So, all right, anyway.
See where he's leaning.
Well, yeah, exactly. All right, anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Shannon. You have a great evening.
Appreciate it.
And good luck.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, Gary?
Name and residence, please.
Hello, my name's Gary Stewart, and I've lived in North Hudson quite a while, and so has a lot of my family. But I have a concern with the timing of post related to the Planning Commission. I'd like to have a set date, like three weeks or four weeks out, so people can have time to see what's going on here at the village, to make a plan for the day of the meeting instead of it happening so quick, you know? Just an amount of time, three weeks to a month should be plenty. That's one of them. And I'd like to ask about the snow plowing ordinance. How are we doing on that?
Here.
Are we working on the snow plowing ordinance?
Well, we cannot discuss at this part of the meeting, we can't discuss it. The snow plowing is coming up, the contract and stuff is coming up, the other is in public works, but if it's not on the agenda tonight, we can't discuss it as a board.
Oh, I see. Well, it's been on the agenda for the other board, you know, the other plant, the commissions for a while, couple of years. And hopefully this year, before the snow flies, we'll have something.
It's on their agenda. I know that, I've seen it on the agenda.
Thank you much for your time.
Thank you, Gary.
Oh, I have one more thing.
Okay.
And one of the resolutions you want to pass, there's a clause for grandfathering. There's a grandfather clause in there for residential, commercial. I don't think it's a good idea, so...
Well, no, we appreciate your input. And, yeah, we have a couple of different ordinance changes, you know, that are, the board will review, the planning officials suggested, so we will look at it. But again, we cannot, you know, in this part of the meeting, we can't really discuss, okay?
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Okay, let's see. Anybody else from the opportunities for... No, I think we get everybody there. Okay, next on the agenda is recommended appointment, Plan Commission member Joshua Bachmann to fill position in discussion and approval requested. I'll just do a little background. One of our Plan Commission members, his wife has some medical issues, and he has to step down. And we, you know, beat the bushes to try to get somebody to volunteer for an unpaid position. And we, Joshua Bachmann, who lives over off of Sixth Street, has volunteered to sit in. He's the one to get involved in helping, you know, the community and the village. So I would recommend him. And Joshua's not here, but we've never had, asked those guys to come through, but he seems committed to do the job. So that's my lobbying for that. And if we can have a motion...
I'll move, Stan.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any discussion or comments? Okay, all in favor of the recommended appointment for Joshua Bachmann? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, and I believe, Melissa, that this land convenience with Landstead, that has been withdrawn from the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, next, number six, amended class parent B slash parent class B liquor license for extended premises, Cozy Corner fundraiser for Coco's Heart Dog Rescue, Sunday 28 August 2016, approval requested. We have a motion.
Can I move that the class B slash class B retail license for the sale of fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquors for Cozy Corner be temporarily amended for an event taking place on Sunday, August 28, 2016, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM with the following conditions? One area outside a building to be completely enclosed with continuous fence from the building's south access door to the designated area across the lot to the property to the east, causing the extended premises to be continuous and accessed only from within the building via the walkway. A, a painted permanent walkway designated the continuation of the licensed establishment to the fenced property east of the business could replace the fenced walkway. This would be consistent with the restriction put on muds and suds now GOV's place for the access to the volleyball courts. Two, use of alcohol shall remain within the building or fenced in area per the establishments. Liquor license. Three, use of outside area only with specific permission of the village board for requested date and times. Four, owner to provide an equal amount of adjacent substitute off-street parking while parking lot area is fenced during time of event. Five, owner to be responsible for band slash music volume. Six, all outside music, two and no later than 10:00 PM.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Colleen. Any further discussion? I thought the new application with the pictures and diagrams and stuff was very well done. And it does free up that, they used to block off like the parking lot between Freedom and Cozy Corner, and now that'll be left open for that back corner. So any other comments or questions?
Who owns the field for the extra parking?
Zappel Brothers.
Zappel Brothers?
Yep.
And they also own the, they're actually the owner of the property that you leased from, I believe, Kirk?
Yep.
And they're all good with it, obviously? Okay? Any other questions? Okay.
Stan, I will stand up for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. Okay, Kirk is abstaining. Melissa, all in favor of the extended use? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is item seven, 2016-2017, parent class B slash class parent B alcohol beverage license, amusement license, Wisconsin Grill LLC doing business as Stars Bar and Grill, approval requested. If there's a motion?
I'll move to approve the class B fermented malt beverages and class B intoxicating liquor license and operated amusement license with an effective date of September 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017 for Wisconsin Grill LLC, DBA Stars Bars and Grill, William Solder Agent.
Second for Mark. Thank you, Mark. Is there any questions or discussion? If there is, I know one of the partners is in the crowd, so if you have, and I can say crowded for our group, that's a pretty good crowd we have tonight. Is there questions or comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of the transfer of the license to Wisconsin Grill from Stars Bar and Grill, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you. You're good to go, or you can sit and be entertained as for as long as you'd like. Okay, next, item eight, adoption of ordinance 01-2016, amending chapter 98 zoning, article two, district regulations, section 98-33, commercial districts C1, C2, C3, section A, uses of village code related to RM2, medium density, multiple family residences, use in a commercial district, approval requested. We would need a motion to discuss.
Stan, you want me to talk about it?
I'll make a motion, too.
Well, we got to wait until we get to a motion and a second, if there is one. Ted, you got the motion? You said yes? Is there a second?
Second.
Kirk, okay. Okay, now we're open for discussion. And as you, if you looked at your packet, there's only, we had some issues with how we deal with different variances or whatever, and this is the only addition to our present ordinance is as a conditional use was added. And that allows us to say, hey, you know, if people want to go off the reservation or whatever on the commercial districts, we have some way to say commercial use, you know, or conditional use, yes or no. Is that correct, Gary? As best you understand it? He's still reading.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, Mike, I mean, I don't know if there's going to be any questions on this one.
Well, it's kind of confusing when you look at number eight and number nine.
Let's go to...
So I have a question.
Okay, well, eight and nine, those are going to be, yeah, those are going to be a little bit different, but this first one, let's just address the, you know, seven, I mean, or I mean, yeah, this is eight, so this is just the as a conditional use type of thing.
Just adding that to commercial districts.
Right.
C1, C2, and C3.
And Mike is, just so everybody knows, Mike is the Chair of Plan Commission.
We talked about this at plan, all, eight, nine, and 10, all three of these proposed zoning changes. And Melissa, I'm just a little bit confused on their action, on their item eight and nine versus what we have on our minutes. And you have the package of the, you have the actual wording of the proposed zoning changes, ordinance changes in the Plan Commission meetings, minutes?
Number eight.
So, we approved two things, and I'm just confused on which one is the...
We should just do one at a time.
So, let's just deal with one at a time. Let's do with eight?
Okay, I guess we did approve all three of them.
First of all, yeah, you can probably stay put, because there might be other questions on the other ones.
Mike, what are we changing in this section of this ordinance, then? What is the essence of the change?
Right, so the first one, amendments to 98 zoning, mixed use as a conditional use in a C3 general, commercial district? Oh, okay.
98-33.
I see, well, we actually have a motion of two things we approved, where there were only two items. One was the PDD, and one was the zoning. And that's why I'm a little confused on what they have for eight and nine, because I don't have the exact wording.
Number eight was approved, and that was allowing, that was just adding those words as a conditional use.
Okay.
That's the only thing that was added. It was just the procedure was added.
Okay.
It was already allowed, it's just...
It was a clarification.
Clarifying the procedure for it.
That, that it would be allowed, a conditional use would be allowed. It is spelled out. So this one's pretty straightforward.
Well, that would be determined by the Plan Commission at the time of the application for, you know...
It's just a clarification for us, right?
Yes. It's a clarification for people wanting to do things that if now we state, if this is approved, that there is a conditional use that will allow that.
Okay. Or could allow it.
We could allow it.
Yes.
Or we could shake that.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. It gives more flexibility to the village.
We're allowing residential and commercial for medium density.
Well, the possibility of...
With conditions.
The possibility of, correct.
Melissa, what...
So what's medium density? What's that?
In, it's in the book, but it...
Square footage.
It's square footage, yeah. High density is a smaller square footage requirement.
And more people in the property.
More people, yep. And again...
That's RM2?
Can I make a comment, please?
Yes.
I think the way the ordinance was without the amendment, it simply said that the use was permitted.
But not as a conditional use. This clarifies it.
Now, it's permitted only as a conditional use, which is a separate procedure.
Melissa, have you got comments from minutes or...
As far as the ordinance that we're on, which is at the top, 01-2016, the only thing, the paragraph, is this the opening paragraph in the commercial district section? The only thing added, it still had that wording in there, any use permitted in the RM2 medium density district may also be permitted in commercial districts. That's what it read before. So it's always been allowed, but we, the added part was as a conditional use. So the procedure was added for to do that. Because it said it, it always said it may be permitted, but it didn't say how it was permitted. So they just added clarification, which was the procedure. So the ordinance wasn't changed, it was just clarifying it would be allowed as a conditional use.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Anybody else get questions on this? Hearing none, we'll vote on the adoption of ordinance 01-2016, and that's a roll call. Tim?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, now, when we'll get into the other sections. Item nine, adoption of ordinance 02-2016, amending chapter 98 zoning, article two, district regulations, section 98-33, commercial districts C1, C2, and C3, section D, general commercial district C3, conditional uses of village code to permit uses in a commercial district, approval requested.
I'll move to approve ordinance... I'll move to approve ordinance number 02-2016, ordinance amending the municipal code for the village of North Hudson, Wisconsin.
Is there a second? Is there a second? For failure of a second, this ordinance will be taken off the agenda. And fails. Okay, item 10, adoption of ordinance 03-2016, amending chapter 98 zoning, article two, district regulations, section 98-35, planned development district PDD, section A, two, minimum size of the village code to reduce the minimum lot size in a planned development district PDD, approval requested. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve ordinance number 03-2016.
Colleen, is there a second? Is there a second? Hearing none, ordinance 03-2016 also fails for failure of a second. It's for the developers that are here, you can come back and discuss with Plan Commission, see if there's something different. But right now, the board apparently feels that changing our ordinances for this particular zoning is not in favor at the time. Okay, item 11, new business from the board or staff, president's comments. The only thing I have to say, as people are probably aware, because I wore the shirt that the cameras in the background hate, but it is August, and we do have Pepper Festival coming up, the 19th, 20th, and 21st. I hope everyone has a safe and enjoyable Pepper Fest, and I hope they are, people are aware that not everybody celebrates the Pepper Fest and be, you know, please, as with fireworks and other things, you know, to help our law enforcement folks so that we don't have any issues, please enjoy responsibly. Gloria?
I would just like to remind everybody, with the fall coming upon us, so is a budget time, so make sure you put that...
I swallowed there, I must spit.
Put that on your agendas.
Sorry about that. I ate that word budget this time here, so, sorry.
We'll get through it. We always do.
Yes, we do, through your diligence. But thank you for that. I'm sure Melissa has something to say, but that Shannon probably gave you a little lead in.
A reminder that the partisan primary election will be held on next Tuesday, August 9th. Polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. In-person absentee voting ends this Friday, August 5th, at 5:00 PM. And then a reminder that photo ID is required to vote.
Photo ID is required. That is a long time coming. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is Plan Commission recommendations, chair update from Michael.
Oh, hi.
Hi. Nice to see you again.
We had a busy Plan Commission meeting last, a few weeks ago. Three of the items were zoning changes, you heard that. And the other one was, what you have under 12B, an application from Mary Ditman to create a two-lot extraterritorial CSM on 950 Trowbrook Road in the town of Hudson. Usually, they have everything ready on those things. It turns out that there's some question about wetlands or something. As we talked about it, this two-lot subdivision has very little impact on the village, so we recommended approval with the two conditions that you see on there. And that was...
We had, oh, excuse me, Charlie Olson, who represents Mary Ditman, we had the gentleman from Old Clark come out and delineate that wetland area, and the map, the initial map was totally incorrect. It showed half the lot, the garage, 150 acres underwater. It's actually very high ground, and they have now come up with a new map.
Okay.
That work's been done, I haven't got the map.
So our recommendation was for approval with the comments from the town and the county be addressed prior, and then that, you know, that the village gets a recorded CSM.
Yep, no, thank you.
Stan, can I move to recommend approval of the application for a two-lot exatorial CSM of Mary Ditman located at 950 Trowbrook Road, pin number 020-1040-30-000, with the following condition, comments from the town of Hudson and the St. Croix County Planning and Zoning Department be addressed prior to signature of the final CSM. Two developer must provide the village of North Hudson a copy of recorded CSM with certificate on the second page of the CSM for the village president and village clerk to sign once the final CSM is approved.
I'll second.
Thank you, Kirk. Mark and Kirk, any comments? The only comment I'll make, this is one of those where, because the property is within 1.25 miles, I believe, of the village border, it's something that the state has asked us to, you know, be aware of and whatever. I mean, you know, sometimes it'd make a difference if it was north development or something like that, where the traffic and stuff would be coming in, but I don't see you guys driving through the back, you know, the backwoods in order to get off the property to get to us, so...
Oh, Charlie, I might just be out there checking it.
Yeah, watch for zap outs, really, then. Jesse Zappos never been known, so...
Let's hook Crantley up to Trowbrook.
What's that? There is a way there, but I mean, we're not going there tonight. Okay. All right, all in favor of the motion to approve, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anonymous, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Mike.
Have a great evening. Okay, 13, Personnel and Finance Committee recommendations, claims approval.
Stan, can I move to approve the August 2016 non-recurring claims of $92,472.33?
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Is there any comments or questions on the spending? Hearing none, and it is a spending issue. Kirk?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. And let's see, it's done in personnel. Public Works Committee Chair update, Brian?
We have one update. We are requesting approval to move the public works meeting from 6:00 PM to 5:30 PM.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kirk. Ted, do you have a comment?
No.
I don't know, I thought he was going to fall out of his chair there, but, okay, any other comments or questions from the left side of the room? Okay, hearing none, all in favor of the time change from 6:00 PM to 5:30 PM for public work, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 15, Public Safety Committee Recommendations, Chair update.
We did meet, but I don't believe we have any action items for the board, minutes reflect our meeting.
Okay, thank you. 16, Public Welfare Committee Recommendations, Colleen?
Public welfare did not meet.
Very good.
Park Board did, and the only thing we have is to move the meeting to the first Thursday of the month at 6:30.
Okay, and everybody was happy with that?
Yeah.
And we're happy that you're going to still stay as the Chair of the committee? All in favor of the proposed scheduled change, signify by saying aye.
A second.
Opposed?
I'll second.
Oh, second?
I didn't, you just didn't hear me.
Oh, okay.
Come on, Mark, speak up.
He's so quiet.
It's the two usuals over there. That's very good. And there is, the only other item on the agenda is we stand adjourned at 7:30 PM. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Hope you were adequately entertained.